Lemon Lime, 176 Main Street in Falmouth, 508-457-4700. Lemon Lime. Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more.
In saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Fortunately Chairman Flynn will not be able to join us tonight. We've also had two items from our agenda that will not, they're going to be continued until March 2nd. We have a wetland hearing that upon request of the applicant will be on March 2nd, and I think we'll put that at time 7:25. And also, our report from the Cape Cod Commission. Andrew again is stuck in Boston with the snow, so he will hopefully do that on March We don't have any other proclamations, any announcements from the Board or from the chairman of the House?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone like to make public comment on some issue that is not on our agenda at this time?
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. I'd like to comment tonight on Chapter 66 of the Massachusetts Public Document Law, and how the vast majority of the time, this town chooses not to abide by it. Many instances, I've asked for records or documents, and my requests haven't been satisfied. The law says that you're supposed to comply within 10 days, or give a reason why not. The first one was when we had the boil water order that went on for five days without us being informed. We were told that the DPW chief and the water superintendent never spoke to one another because the DPW chief was in Florida. I attempted to get those phone records, I was told they wasn't exist, they didn't exist. I checked with, I believe it was Sprint, and emailed back and forth with the man, and he showed me that they actually do. And of course, with the NSA issue, everyone knows that all phone records exist. I never got those. Another time, I was looking for a memo from Attorney Duffy. I was told by members of the Board of Selectmen that he wrote this memo. I wanted it produced because I was sure he didn't write it, because what he said violated the Charter in three different ways. I went back and forth with Attorney Duffy for a while, and he told me that they had so many memos and documents, and he couldn't pinpoint it. So I gave him three weeks on either side. I asked for memos and documents for a six-week period. He sent me a bill for $128. I received this box, filled. Instead of six weeks' worth, it was 12 years' worth. Much of this was in triplicate. Nothing had anything to do with what I asked for. There was even a confidential resume and application for the job of Town Manager in here, which is illegal to dispense.
Can you finish up, your two minutes? Can you finish up, please? That's two minutes?
Pardon me? Yeah, two minutes, right. So, I sent back again, and he sent me another box. Time had expired, it mattered no more. You can see that I never opened it. And I'm sure there was another bill for $128 in there. I recently went to the-
Thank you very much, Mr. Fineran. Your two minutes is up, please sit down. It was your rule, it's just a suggestion of two minutes? Your two minutes is up, please sit down.
I didn't suggest two minutes. Well, I'm still not getting anything from the DPW.
Mr. Fineran, please sit down.
And the public's aware, you guys don't abide by the rules.
Thank you.
But, there's other ways to work around it. I'll leave this for Frank. Because I'm sure we don't need it.
Any other public comment? Next item of business is dealing with the minutes from the February 2nd Executive Session. First item was with the Falmouth Country Club Lease Management Agreement.
I move approval of the minutes of February 2nd, Executive Session.
Do we have a second?
Aye, for second.
Could that be with a not to release, Mr. Chairman?
With not to release, excuse me.
I was just gonna make that part of the motion.
Okay.
I'm going matter.
I actually think it can only be Sue who seconds, because Rebecca was not here at that meeting.
And I will second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's the Falmouth Country Club Lease Agreement. Second is the Executive Session, the Proposed Workers' Compensation Settlement. I still think we cannot release this one yet, is that correct?
Correct, yes. I move that we accept the minutes of February 2nd for the second, the Proposed Workers' Compensation Settlement, and not to release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. And we have the regular minutes, Monday, February 2nd. Just notice on the bottom, I've talked to Denise, and the actual minutes we'll have on the very bottom, when it says Executive Session Minutes, it'll be referred to as regular session minutes on the footer, in case you have that concern.
Great, I'll move for approval and to release.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. And that's unanimous. Next item of business are the administrative orders. First is to approve a Falmouth Public Library Application for Customer Service and the Digital Age Grant. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Falmouth Public Library has requested authorization to approve the application, as noted in your packet. I know that Leslie Morrissey is here with us this evening, and perhaps Leslie might want to make a couple comments on it. It does involve customer service, if the Board would so authorize.
Actually Linda is, Linda Collins, the Assistant Director, is writing this grant, so I thought she would speak to it much better than you.
Thank you. This is a $10,000 grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners.
Linda, if you would just introduce yourself in your position for our section.
Linda Collins, Assistant Director at the Public Library.
Thank you.
This is a $10,000 grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, and we would use this money for three purposes. One, for staff training. As more and more content is delivered digitally, staff need to be able to assist members of the community with a wide variety of devices that they come to us with. We'd also like to use the money for a web redesign. Again, as more content is available digitally, we need to move to a more interactive and user-friendly website that is easily updated. And third, we want to upgrade our wireless access points. They're, the current standards, to the current standards, at the main library and at the north and east branches, to provide free connectivity to the public.
Any questions?
I just really like the name, Customer Experience in a Digital Age. I mean, that's just really so important, so that you can access everything that's available. So I really like the work that you did with that, I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you see that this grant is going to cause further financial burden for the town?
There will be no expenses for the town. In writing the grant, I could have spent the $10,000 three times over, but we intend to keep it at that amount, and if there is any overage, it can be handled by either the trustees or the Friends of Falmouth Public Library.
Just because that's where the contingency is, that we're supposed to put these to the Finance Committee if there is any potential for that, and I do not see that happening.
I move that we approve the application for the grant entitled, Customer Experience in a Digital Age.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Next item is to authorize an additional third extension of the Falmouth Country Club Lease Management Agreement with Billy Casper-Golf. Just to iron out some of the final details of that. Heather, do you want to take the lead on that?
Sorry.
I think we skipped over one, which was the CPC-
Oh no, that's third, I think.
Is it third? I'm sorry. I had it out of order.
There's just no paperwork in your packet on the-
On the other one.
I think you really narrowed it right down. This really is to allow the documentation to be produced. I also might note that, I think it was yesterday, Billy Casper himself passed away, and I know that he personally was a really important part of the spiritual leadership of Billy Casper-Golf, and his commitment to the community. That's really something I heard a lot over the years from the individual staff at Billy Casper-Golf, so we did send a nice note onto them today, acknowledging our interest in pursuing that and getting to that point, but we're still working on the final lease agreement.
And we do expect that that can come into the March 2nd meeting?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
It's the expectation.
Any other motion?
I move that the extension be approved.
Okay.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? None. Unanimous. Third item. Should we just skip over Mr. Patterson, or should we move on to the, to authorize adjustment of the Lawrence Academy project involving CPC funding? Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as you've noted in this, Selectman Patterson is well aware, with his able assistance as the liaison in working with the CPC, the, we've had discussions about the Lawrence Academy set aside, which goes back several years, for which the town applied, and for which, subsequent to the decision to fund, a change in policy was made, which resulted in the offer for the grant subject to a preservation restriction covering the entire building. And that is a change which occurred and was not part of the application process, as the Board may recall, and it had not applied to all projects previously. So we had a number of discussions, because in the several months, and actually it's been a year and a half, two years that have ensued, that's been an issue we've had some discussions about, and as a compromise, it has been suggested that the preservation restriction, were this grant to be accepted by the Board, that restriction would apply only to the cupola and the portico. And the Board, if that would be your desire, would have to so agree, and I would defer to Selectman Patterson for his additional comments. We appreciate his instrumental actions in this regard as well.
Yeah, I might add that Michael Caspary and the President of the Chamber of Commerce was part of this discussion over the last three months, and I don't want to speak for him, but essentially, he feels like this is actually in the best interest of the chamber. And also, the piece that would not be included in the scope of this project would be maintenance that the Chamber, as indicated, they would be responsible for picking up. So, the work is going to get done, it just is not going to be covered by the historical preservation restriction. And I think Julian's concerns and my concerns were both, that we could be creating a liability for people 25, 30 years out, because I read through the original preservation restriction, and it's pretty exhaustive, and there have been so many changes made to that building to make it a more modern structure, that fall far outside of that preservation restriction. So, any work that might get done in the future would require replacing a lot of that upgrade. And so, anyway, in discussion with the, a group of the Community Preservation Committee, you know, we kind of worked this out, and even their consultant, Eric Dre, who writes the preservation restrictions, kind of agreed that the important historical features of this building really are the cupola and the portico, and that it seemed reasonable to him that that would be the visible historical features that people would see, and that's the thing that should be protected. So it's kind of where we are today. And I think it's a win-win, and I, and the Community Preservation Committee actually voted to accept this change. They did add a little extra stipulation, which is not a problem, because it's actually part of the current lease, which I'll make as part of the motion. Are you ready?
Thank you for the effort on that. Any other questions, rooms?
Was this, has this been brought up previously, from the CPC?
It was brought up when the original, when the original money was put towards this. That concern was raised.
Okay, okay. Just somewhere that, okay.
Any motion?
Yes, I move to modify the scope of the Lawrence Academy Community Preservation Committee project to include restoration of the building cupola and portico only. And that any future leases between the town and any future tenant will start, state that, quote, "No modification, alteration, demolition, or repair of the exterior of the structure may be undertaken without first consulting the Falmouth Historical Commission and the Historic Districts Commission, and seeking any official review that may be required."
And just a question on the motion, who's responsible for that? Is it the Town Manager, or, in other words, do we need to make as part of the motion, who's going to do it?
Well, the Town Manager would be the entity that accepts the grant and signs on behalf of the Board with this authorization, so ultimately, the Town Manager would be responsible for overseeing that.
So with that stipulation, I'll second.
Can I respond to that a little bit further, too? That really is in a letter of agreement, and the preservation restriction wording itself that still need to be worked out. We're only changing the scope, is a final approval of the project. There's details that have to be filled in, but the Conservation, I mean, Community Preservation Committee wanted us to at least agree to the change in scope, so that they would march forward. They would then engage their consultant to come up with the preservation restriction, which costs them money, of course. So, they wanted us to kind of take the first step to agree to this change in scope.
And the oversight would be covered in the all-in, as to-
Absolutely, and it will come back to us eventually.
Are you okay with the stipulation being added to your motion?
Sure.
And then I second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Unanimous. Chief Dunn, your quarterly report, please.
Because you're ahead of schedule, I had some introductions, but we'll do those at the end of the quarterly report, if that's all right. Great. Excuse me. I'm going to talk about our staffing again. Always seems to be the top subject. As you're aware, we have a total of 58 funded positions. Currently, we have 48 offices available to work, including myself. However, that's going to change very quickly. With four officers, which I'll introduce you to shortly, who just graduated from the Police Academy on Friday, we'll bring those numbers up to a total of 51 in May, when they're ready to hit the streets. Currently, right now, they started, today was their first day, and they started their 15-week field training program. So, we don't really count them as manpower right at the moment. I have one officer out of line of duty. It's an officer that was injured last June in an ATV accident. He was on one of the police department's ATVs, broke both his arms, still out recovering. I've got one officer, Anthony DeVito, he's on military leave, just recently been deployed, first of the month. Don't expect to see him back till the, sometime in August, what we've been told. I am pleased to say that we have just hired four more officers, who will be attending a March Academy, I believe it's March 21st in Plymouth, so they'll be starting that. And with that, we just call for another list, where we are hoping to hire three more officers for a May Academy. Mass Chiefs have been pushing the state to have more academies, and they just recently opened the Randolph Academy, which was closed due to budget cuts back in 2009, 2010. And they've just recently hired a new director, and plan on having a class in May, which works out great for us. So we'll have four in the academy in March, and hopefully, three more in May. So, total number of new offices in 2015 will be 11. It's like a third of the Patrol Division, so, pretty excited about that. And that should get us to the funded 58. That being said, we are anticipating a retirement in June, so. Dispatch. Currently, we have a 16-hour position. Denise Coleman just sent over several applications that we're reviewing, and we'll probably have interviews, probably the first next week for that, and then we'll be full in dispatch Parking Department. Vicki Young, who was our parking attendant, she retired in January 1st, 2015. I've been in discussion with the manager as far as replacement of her, but currently, so that we can keep the enforcement and everything in Woods Hole, I brought back our summer officer, Brian Warner. He was the young man that was walking Main Street, so currently, right now, he's taking care of the parking meters and patrolling Woods Hole. In the Detective Division for Narcotics, currently, we've had, this quarter here, we've had 22 undercover buys, 13 warrant arrests, eight search warrants with GPS warrants. GPS warrants are for your vehicles. We need to get warrants to do that, we just can't put devices on your vehicle. Seizure of motor vehicles, boats, and cash. So far, we've seized $34,000 in drug seizures, through the investigations, two motorcycles. Indictments through the courts. We have seven Superior Court indictments, and one federal court indictment. And we have bought one handgun off the street. The defendants have been charged with distribution of different classes, A, B, and D, which are cocaine, heroin, Percocet, marijuana. There've been some charges in trafficking, because of the amount of the weight of the drugs. And again, we've also charged someone with possession in selling a firearm without a license, so. Calls for service. Self-initiated calls, 3,666 compared to this time last year, it was 3,581. Dispatch calls, those are the people that are calling into the station requesting services. So far this year, we've had 4,127 compared to last year, 3,993. Total calls for service, 7,793. So the call volume is up 2.89% compared to last year. We just recently posted in the Department for an Elder Affairs Officer, with some of the retirements that we just recently had, our Elder Affairs Officer. And that officer works within the Department on basically elder issues that come up through a course of investigation, but also work hand-in-hand with the senior center. And it's going to be a great partnership with them, because we're going to be doing some, we met with Jill Bishop, and give the elder population some better service, if necessary, as to what they need. Since I haven't seen you since the, some of our other events, the Christmas Parade, again, we'd had no problems on the law enforcement side or police side. Our Stuff a Cruiser toy drive, again, second year, very successful, thousands of toys. This community is extremely generous, and we had three dates there, and every time, the, we picked the biggest cruiser, too. We picked the SUV, so. And they filled it, every time. And that was also a partnership with the Rod and Gun Club, too. They had a drive, and they came and donated all those toys, so they went through that to the service center. Again, all those toys stay local in the service center. Something else that we tried this year was, just prior to that, in late October, early November, we did Stuff a Cruiser with a food drive. And that food was donated to the Navigator Club, and I believe some of them went to the service center, too, because the Navigator Club, as you're aware, does the Thanksgiving meal and things like that. So, that was successful, and I look forward to doing that again next year. Some, excuse me, upcoming events, most, one's going to be the closest, and I can't come sooner enough, which is in May. It's going to be our Police Memorial, and we're going to have our ceremony on Wednesday, May 13th, 2015, out in front of the police station, which we pause and reflect on all law enforcement offices throughout the country who have given the elder the sacrifice, as well as our own Samuel Pierce, who died in the line of duty in 1930. So, that's my report, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
So?
Do you have any new information on the Narcan program, in terms of how many officers have been able to take the training, has it been used?
The entire department is now trained, all ranks, except for our new officers, they'll be going through some of that training now. But, all the offices on the street are trained, all the cruisers are equipped with Narcan. That came through the grant with the Sheriff and the District Attorney. We have used Narcan, the offices. Most of the times, people aren't calling us, because we're the police, they'll call rescue. I do, top my head, because I just had this conversation with members of the Finance Committee, something in the effect of 190-something doses of Narcan we used last year.
In Massachusetts?
In the town of Falmouth.
In the town of Falmouth. Wow. Incredible. And then, just, I understand the cost has gone up? What is the effect of that?
It has gone up. Like I said, the doses that we received, that we currently have, came through the District Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Department, I believe, on a grant. Going forward here, we're going to have to purchase it. Usually, a dose was somewhere in the vicinity of $45, it's now gone up to $75.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate that answer.
Any other questions?
I just would ask you to extend a thank you to your staff for all the generous support they're giving, and their charitable efforts. It's a great contribution to the town.
I will. And it's their ideas, and, you know, they've just come to me and asked if I would support it, and I wholeheartedly support it, so, they do a great job.
Indeed.
And we'll put your report on continuance until your four officers are here.
Yeah, I told them they didn't have to be here-
I saw one of them here, so.
I told them they didn't have to be here till 7:30, because originally, they were scheduled, so.
Okay. So your report's not over, but it'll be picking up very shortly, as soon as you-
I appreciate it. Thank you. All four of you? All four of you? Just you? All right. We'll wait. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a sign variance request from the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. Thank you, Wendy.
I'm glad I came early, I wasn't sure how busy it'd be tonight, the weather. Yes, I'm Wendy Bissler, I'm the Executive Director of Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. I'm before you tonight because we'd like permission to put up a sign along the bike path. It's actually going to be on town property. It's on the right-of-way of the bike path. I gave all this, I don't know if you've all seen this, this is the sign. We were fortunate enough, a few years ago, to receive CPC funding to help remove exotic invasive plants along the shoreline of Oyster Pond, between the pond and the bike path. And as part of our monies from CPC, they gave us monies to put up a sign, they wanted us to put up a sign acknowledging that we had done their work, some of the work with their funds. And so, we wanted to take this opportunity, then, to expand on that, and actually made- And so we wanted to take this opportunity then to expand on that and actually make a more informative sign, too, about what the project was about. So the sign will look, it follows very much like the signs that are currently up there that the Bike Ways has put up. It's going to look exactly like the Bike Ways sign. They're a national park, cantilevered signs, it's the same company and everything, so.
And the location, will it be, can you, will you be able to see the potential new property from that sign?
Um, kind of.
Sort of in that, it's almost in that direction.
Yeah, you'll be looking in that direction.
You do see a lot of shellfish right there, because I've been on that bench, that's really a great spot.
Oh, have you seen shellfish there, really? Wow.
I think probably from the gulls, though.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, because the pond is too fresh for shellfish, but, yeah.
We do have recommendation from the Designer of Your Committee that they do recommend the signage as being presented.
Oh, good. And I'm, the Concom's also taking a look at this, because of course it's within their jurisdiction, too, so.
Any other questions?
The only thing is that I would make a comment that you're keeping it the very same as the other signs, so it's rather uniform look.
Yes, that's, that's what we wanted.
And then everything is the same as you had before, rather than to try to be a little more original.
Right, right. So it's going to, it's going to look like this, which we use the Bike Ways sign as a template. Of course, our information's different, but it's basically the same kind of color and everything, pretty much.
That was a, that was a good thing for you to do.
Yeah, yeah, because that way, yeah, we wanted this kind of uniformity.
Any other questions?
No, just a thank you, because I think providing an educational sign that explains what's going on, informs people, informs the citizens of Falmouth what their contributions are actually being invested in, is a very valuable thing.
Yeah, and it's, it's.
And you get to give credit to the CPC efforts as well.
Yeah, and it's such a public space, and it's so heavily used by the public, that we thought this was a good opportunity to highlight the funds, not only from them, but from other donors and the work. Because before we started doing our project, you actually could not see the pond from the Bike Ways. It was completely behind a huge wall of fragmites, so we're very happy that we've been able to remove that, and we're having the native vegetation come back, so it's been a great success, so.
Job I do, I wasn't sure it was going to be able to actually be completed because they are so invasive.
Yeah.
I didn't think so in the beginning when we first got in there, but it's, it's been
very successful.
Good. Any other questions, Collins?
Hope to approve the sign.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Do we, just a question, do we need to make a continued upon approval by the Conservation Commission?
If they deny it, it won't happen, so.
Yeah, yeah, if they deny it.
That sounds good to me.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none, unanimous.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks.
I would actually now suggest that we move out of order of our agenda to the articles of the special town meeting. Because I do think we may have some representatives from the farmers market who want to be here to answer any questions we might have.
Good idea.
But since we're a little bit on, out of our agenda, in a few minutes, we'll also have the Chief come back. So we're moving on to the special town meeting articles for Tuesday, April 14th. As we did on last Monday, I'll take a motion page by page to add the articles as they're listed to the warrant.
So moved.
So you're adding Articles 1 through 6?
I'll second. Can I ask a question?
Sure. Any discussion of Articles 1 through 6?
Yeah, just a question. Article 4, is that?
I'm going to put this on the table for just a minute. Chief Dunn, would you please do us the honors and introduce our new officers?
Thank you, it's a pleasure. And it really is a pleasure. As I said earlier, they have just completed a 21-week program at the Plymouth Police Academy. I believe it's the 59th session, right? 59th session. And today was their first day on the job on their field training program. And because we open them with welcome moms, we do, I mean, we had the electronic signs with their names up there, I don't know if you drove by and saw it. But we also, at the end of the day, gave them an extra special gift, and they went through Taser training. So they've all been Tased tonight.
So she's going to call them right now?
That's why they're coming, yes. But it is my pleasure to introduce these off, these fine officers, who, again, will be a great addition to the Falmouth Police Department. Here we have Julia Massey, Michael Codfitter, Christopher Livingston, and Donald D. Miranda. Two of the officers have relatives on the department already. Julia's brother is Detective David Massey, and Christopher's sister is Jamie Livingston. So, but again, it's, they're, they worked real hard. They've got another 15 weeks that they will be paired up with one of our field training officers and be, like I say, a great addition to the police department. So if you have any questions, Collins?
Chief Dunn, I know that Michael is a Falmouth boy. Are the other officers from Falmouth also, or?
Yes, they are. They all were hired, as you were, we're Civil Service Department, and they're all hired off the residential list of the Civil Service. You'd like to just say a little bit about yourself?
Born and raised in Falmouth. I'm in the military as well. I've done about seven years with the Mass Air National Guard. I worked as a dispatcher with the Falmouth Police Department for about two, three years?
Three years, about three years.
Almost three years.
Born, raised in Falmouth as well. Very active with sports, played basketball for several years.
Till I got too old.
I come from a family of law enforcement. My father's a sergeant in the State Police. My brother's a deputy sheriff in Florida. One of my grandfathers was a trooper, and the other one was an AMHRS cop. And Michael's also a sheriff in Florida. So kind of long line of law enforcement in our family.
I'm originally from New York. I've lived in Falmouth for about four years now. I'm in the Army, I've been in the Army for about four and a half years. I studied at Berdawatt State University for criminal justice. And like, like, chief, my sister also is from the job.
Born, raised here in Falmouth, at all Falmouth schools, and then went on to high school at Upper Cape Tech. And then my last job was going to live about seven years at the foul plant in Plymouth. And I got the opportunity to come to where my real desire was here at Falmouth, and everything worked out great.
Well, thank you very much. I'm certainly thrilled that we're having some people who have a Falmouth connection coming to join our police force. I think it sends exactly the right message, and we're very honored that you're eager and willing to join our force and become part of our community and even a further extension. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. So further discussion on Articles 1 through 6?
I'm sorry, no, I was asking a question before you. Article 4 deals with negotiations over a police or fire contract. Which one is it?
That one's police, police lieutenant.
That's police. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on Articles 1 through 6? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, unanimous. Page 2, we have Articles 7 through 15. Actually, on these ones, the first ones were a little more of sort of business ones we typically have. I do want to mention what each article is, just to get that out there in the public, that Article 7 deals with a general, petition for home rule legislation for a room tax, the room occupancy tax, reconsidering that again for vacation, but not limited to apartments, single or multifamily houses or cottages, at the rate of 6% of the total amount of the rate of heat occupancy. Article 8 is money for the construction of Old Dock Road, of the wharf at Old Lock Road and the retaining wall. Article 9 is funding for the Department of Communications. Article 10 is to fund the replacement, repair, and maintenance of the parking meters. Article 11 is maintenance fund and repairs to the wind turbines. Article 12 is the purpose of funding a security system at existing town facilities. Article 13 is funding the repair and replacement of the Falmouth Country Club golf course irrigation system. Article 14 is to fund equipment for the maintenance of some of the equipment at the golf course. And Article 15 is repair and replacement of the beach department make-up break. So I have a motion to add Articles 7 through 15 to the warrant.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, unanimous. Articles 16, 17, and 18 are on our next few pages. Article 16 is appropriate sum of money to rebuild the dune wall at Old Silver Beach, is on the request of the Board of Selectmen. Article 17 is a sum of money to make improvements to Marina Park in order to accommodate additional public uses, also on the request of the Board of Selectmen. Article 18 is to amend Chapter 105 of the Code of Falmouth, dealing with collection containers, fairly lengthy lists of parts to this article. This is also a request of the Board of Selectmen. This is following upon recommendation from the Town Council, following the, I think it's prison using the town of Randolph. Franklin. And Franklin, sorry, the town of Franklin. I have a motion to add Articles 16, 17, and 18 to the warrant.
So moved.
I'll second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, none, that's unanimous. Article 19 is to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent name a parcel of land at East Falmouth, the intersection of White's Landing Road and East Falmouth Highway. And also to add two temporary construction easements. Motion to add Article 19?
So moved.
I just want to make a comment that that's apparently the area of Boson's Marine, just so people can recognize that.
Yep.
And second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor adding Article 19?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, Article 19. Articles 20, 21, and 22. 20 is funding for the window replacement at Lawrence School. 20 is to fund the improvements to White Pine Lane. And Article 22 is to vote to approve the laying out of White Pine Lane. Motion to add Articles 20, 21, and 22 to the warrant?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, unanimous. Now we have Articles 23, 24, 25, and 26. Article 23 votes to authorize, votes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent name a conservation restriction on a parcel of property. This is the, dealing with the Oyster Pond Environmental Trust on, in the Woods Hole Ecological Institution on land off of Oyster Pond Road. And this is a request of both the Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Committee. Article 24 is to transfer funds to the Falmouth Housing Authority's preservation of affordable family housing. Article 29 is funds for the community pres, sorry, Article 25 is the community preservation fund to fund the rehabilitation of two exterior doorways at the West Falmouth United Methodist Church. And Article 26 is to transfer money to the community housing reserve account. I have a motion to add Articles 23, 24, 25, and 26 to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none. Are you, are we comfortable with the numbering of the articles, or do we, do you need to move any of them around?
I thought it was number 12, actually.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to execute the warrant, now that we've actually added the articles to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, unanimous. Executes the warrant. We will now go back to our agenda. We had a few items that did not happen earlier, so we moved our agenda up a little bit. We'll now discuss and vote the Falmouth Market's setup and takedown provisions, parking plan request for fee waiver. This is a discussion among the board. If we have questions for the farmers market, I know they're here and eager and ready to answer any questions you may might have. I would suggest that we discuss the fee waiver first as one item, and then discuss the provisions, takedown, and parking plan as a second bunch of topics.
Makes sense.
If you've seen in our packet, we do have minutes from last year when we had quite a lengthy discussion about the fee. The fee is typically $100 per day. Last year, we had a discussion of, in the previous year, that they had done a quite good deal of work in maintaining the Pagnunin Park. Last year, we debated whether it was going to be a reduction of fee to 100, 300, or 500 dollars, and finally voted on a fee of 300 dollars for last year. And the charge again with this year by what we advertised would be 100 dollars today for 2,100, and so they have requested a waiver of that fee.
And I remember, you're the liaison for the?
Agricultural Commission.
Agricultural.
And the Agricultural Commission is the entity which, from which the farmers market originated many, many years ago. And I did have a meeting with representatives from the farmers market this past Friday, in which we spent a lot more time talking about the other issues, dealing with parking issues, and, but they've also given us some information about what their financial status is and what the charges of farmers markets are in other nearby places.
I saw that that was at your request. I did some more research and came up with some information that was helpful.
That we do charge, that right now, they charge vendors the highest of anyone around to come close to balancing the budget.
And how, just a quick question if I may, Mr. Chair. How is it calculated, the, because I know they do a tremendous amount of work and, and contribution, you know, sort of in trade, they have historically. Is there a way that that's kept track of, or?
Two, when, two years ago, in the years previous, they were doing a whole bunch of work at Pagnunin Park to maintain it.
Right.
Last year, Rocky Gomes really wanted that to become under his purview, and so he actually requested that he was going to take care of that. And so last year was the first year that there wasn't any in-kind services work they were doing directly towards the benefit of the town. There are a bunch of services that they do to organizations within the town that has both dollar figure and, I think, social figure, social value, but nothing that we would say, okay, that is, would be a direct swap for things, for money that the town's getting.
Is the, what's the amount on the waiver? But I mean, is it zero, or is it a percentage?
In their request, I don't think that they have said exactly what they're hoping we're going to, and I think that they've asked us to waive the fee.
So that means, then there's, it's a zero charge?
That's what their request is, I'm not sure. I mean, certainly it is up to us to say anything between zero and none, between a waiver of 2,100 dollars or a waiver of 0 dollars. It is certainly within our purview to do so.
Mr. Chairman, just to interject, as per the policy, you, it indicates that at least one day of the fee shall not be waived.
Okay.
Just for clarification, technically, this would be a fee exemption as opposed to a waiver, same result, of course, but the exemption is with, required by, prior approval by the Board of Selectmen. So, and also with a stipulation that it does not involve a waiver of inspection, fees, or other fees associated with direct costs on the part of the town.
And that's part of your policy?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that all fees are waived, that are not subject to any requirements which the manager just read. And I think that comes within this board's thinking when this matter came up earlier, that we would support financially as much as possible, the move and the great, you know, change of moving to Marina Park, and that the farmers market folks had asked for some support in that regard, and the board did say that we would try to help out. So on that basis, I'd like to make the motion that the, all fees that are exemptable be exempted.
Okay, so for the fees that are not, is that there is a automatic $10 filing fee that everyone does pay, and according to this, the, it has to be at least one day paid for. So you're suggesting a fee of 110 dollars for the use of the, for those 21 days?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Are you, what is the total amount that is being waived?
So it would be $2,000.
$2,000.
And how many other nonprofits get this same type of opportunity?
I don't think there's any other nonprofit that fits the exact same description.
What about our? What about our, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a comment.
The two, the two that I'm aware of, the art market, I think, has seen a fee waiver. I don't know if it's a complete or not, but that's certainly come before the board. And then the Roger Days program, Arts Alive.
And Arts Alive also has a fee waiver?
We branched at that one in the past.
Okay. And do we know that amount?
It's several days, so no, I don't know the amount.
I think it's three days.
Yeah.
And the dollar amount?
Three hundred dollars.
Three hundred of the three.
Right.
And this one is twenty-one hundred?
Well, it'd be two thousand.
Two thousand even?
Well, yeah.
Well, two thousand, okay. So this one is two thousand, and Arts Alive, which is three days, is two hundred?
Yeah, stipulation, it can't be any more than that because we are required to charge them a hundred dollars for at least one day.
No?
I would just like to second what Sue is saying. I think that the transition that we're asking the farmers' market to make, you know, is an experiment to some extent. And we don't know how much business will be carried over to the new location. So I'm inclined to do exactly the same as the reason why I seconded it.
The one thing I want to be a little careful of is last year, we had given the waiver to three hundred dollars, or three hundred and ten dollars as a one-year offer. I would want this, and now we're coming back and saying it's a hundred and ten dollars. Again, I think this should be a one-year thing because we are, we have asked them to move. We've changed the location. There's going, I think we need to have this discussion again next year as to what the fee should be. And it very well may be, or in some ways, the ideal situation is it works beautifully. It goes so well that they are clamoring for people to come and clamoring for vendors. And we say, you know, actually, now the finances are such that we can stick with what the fee is. But I'm comfortable with that being
One year part of my motion. That makes a lot of sense.
So the point of giving last year's waiver was because there wasn't any moving going on. We just agreed to that?
Well, I think, a discussion last year was the previous situation had been that they were doing a lot of work for the park and maintaining the park. The seeding, they planted bushes, they did the watering on a bigger basis, and that was what they were used to. And that they were not being charged a twenty-one hundred dollars fee in cash to all of a sudden say, you're going from not paying anything, or paying a hundred dollars a year, to paying two thousand. Which seemed to be a huge jump up for a nonprofit organization, which, you know, in our books right now says they, and they're about, in their check account, have two hundred and forty dollars. This is not a group that has those kind of funds to be able, if we came to them right now and said, you have to pay two thousand dollars to be able to do this, they would be positioned, I think they would have to fold up and say, well, we can't do that. We don't have that money.
And so your motion is for this year only?
I think that's all we can do anyway.
Exactly.
That's right, but Doug wanted to be part of the exact motion, and it is.
Any further discussion on the waiver, on exemption? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So a fee of a hundred and ten dollars with the filing fee and the one hundred dollars. Next item is dealing, discussing issues with the parking and the vendor setup and removal. Heather, do you want to walk us through at least part of this?
Sure, I'll just introduce the topic, certainly. The farmers' markets asked the board to contemplate life parking on the lawn area in Falmouth Harbor. And the area that they're looking at, and you have all the material in your board, is closer to the restaurant than the bandshell, so it isn't the bandshell area. And it really positions vehicles adjacent to their tents. And there are multiple different scenarios. I know they've reached out to all, the town departments have had multiple meetings with the harbor master to lay that out and determine whether it's feasible. Because the application didn't get here until late Friday midday, and we haven't heard back from all staff, but you do have a few referrals in your file. Really is, it is, it's a policy issue for the Board of Selectmen to determine whether you want to use that lawn area, grassy area for inactive parking use.
I'm, I'm comfortable without the reports being complete. I don't think we have police, fire. Who, who are we missing exactly?
I haven't gone through to determine who you're missing, but I do know that there is a referral from fire and the harbor master. You do not have police, and you do not have parks.
I move that we table this discussion till we get recommendations from the missing departments.
Well, as I said, I did meet with this group. Their vendors are very nervous about not knowing where the parking is going to be. And if we don't do this, make any progress tonight and not have our meeting until March second, they are in real danger of losing a substantial number of their vendors who need to find places to go and need to set up contracts that they're going to be going places. I would hope that we might be able to make some kind of approval contingent upon the police department and the parks department not being uncomfortable with the plan. I do know that currently, we have already set the precedent that parking does go on on Thursdays on the grassy area in front of the bandshell. And that also parking of trailers goes on on that grassy area in addition. So we've already set the precedent that parking vehicles is okay on the grass. These are vehicles that will be coming up, stopping, staying, not coming in and out. If we don't have parking here, according to the traffic flow, they're going to have to park, pull up on the grass to unload, go someplace else, come back and pull up on the grass to load up again. So if we don't let them park on the grass here, they're actually going to be doing double duty on the parking on the grassy area. Because there is no place that they can unload along Scranton Avenue.
I understand that, but the reason for my motion is, I don't think we have enough time in these few minutes to analyze this. And in the process of the, it's sort of, I don't know if it's exactly the special events group, but the group that Heather has just included, that we are awaiting reports from, they're going to have the time to analyze all of these things. And I think if we send out an invitation to vendors and then the plan changes, that could also, I mean, it's essentially a contract that you're asking for from the vendors. And if you represent that the situation is different than it actually is, I think that's going to cause a problem. And, you know, we're, we're in Blizzard situation right now. Is there a middle ground between now and our next meeting? Is there a way to expedite the review by the police?
One of the options, if I just might interject, would be to consider moving forward, but adding, stipulating that whatever conditions parks and police would place upon this approval would be acceptable to the board. Those are the two that you have not received to date. And I'm confident that we have reasonable people reviewing this and that they would be supportive of finding a way to make this work logistically, but they just have not had the chance to complete their review. So I don't think you're going to see anything highly unusual, but it would, it would legitimize the fact that they have not reported yet if the board would be so comfortable.
Heather?
I just wanted to comment that the, the timing is what it is, the material came in late on Friday. But it's very clear, it was a good, good package of materials. It responded to all the issues that we asked them to address in terms of what staff would need to review. So I don't think there's anything missing in terms of the material for review, and it was very responsive and appreciated.
I'll withdraw my motion. That makes sense.
Any question?
I, excuse me. I think when we had our discussion the last time, it was agreed upon that all of the vendors would park at Gus Canty.
Agreed upon by, I'm not sure exactly whom. I mean, at no point was the farmers' market involved in this. They don't feel that they were told that's where they had to park. And if you actually look at the situation about asking these people to unload, walk a quarter mile across a very, very dangerous road. I, I'm worried about asking those vendors, and then at six o'clock, asking all twenty-five vendors to drive their trailers across from Gus Canty Park, across East Main Street, onto that road at that intersection to come and pick up their stuff. I, I think it was a situation that maybe, I should have thought of more carefully before I agreed to it because it actually creates more problems and more headaches in my mind that I think is a good idea. That I really think we need to come up with another solution and really think that Gus Canty is the right place for the vendors to bring their trailers and trucks.
Okay, I recall the conversation as being that if farmers' market is going to be at the Marina, therefore, the vendors would not be parking in that area because there wasn't a place to park when you were thinking about the different boats that come into that area with all of their equipment. So you were trying to share the same piece of property. So when we had the conversation, it was that the farmers' market would go to Gus Canty, and then you would still be able to have room for the boats.
Well, the plan, if you look at the plan right here, the plan does not, will not prohibit the boats in any way that the park is going to
That was their concern.
Right.
Excuse me. I mean, that, that was the concern, that you had two groups with large pieces of equipment were going to use the same piece of land, and one had to say, to make sure that the other one didn't use up all of that area in that grass.
Well, the group has had a very extensive conversation with Greg Fraser. That option B, which is
Greg commented.
which puts the parking down here, which is where the boat parking often is, and the trailer parking, is an option that Greg and the farmers' market is not in favor of. It is another option that could be considered. Everyone, or at least the farmers' market and Greg Fraser, are much more in support of these options that put the parking actually near the tents. And so, and Greg, as I understand, according to his recommendations, is very comfortable with that plan working from a harbor master point of view. It doesn't talk about what's going to happen to the grass. It doesn't talk about the issues about the lawn. But they do feel that there's a very easy way to get the cars up there in a way that will not be disruptive and not get in the way of the boating and trailer.
He feels he can accommodate the trailers after having analyzed it all.
All right.
But up until that time, we were uncertain of that. You're quite correct. So we're pleased that harbor master feels they can be accommodated.
You can have both groups in the same area here.
Well, there'll be two different areas. If this, this is the, probably the option B map's the best one. That, in the option B, this area down here, this one here, this will stay for the boat trailers. And this area up here will be for the farmers' market. For the vendors. I mean, you're still going to have the two-hour parking limit on all the other spots. You know, catch and scan, but long-term boaters aren't to be used there anyway because it's a two-hour parking limit.
Okay, understood that part. Okay. All right.
Jim?
Go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned under this situation where we have rain or just after rain, and how much that ground gets chewed up by vehicles going in and out. So I think we need to have some kind of protection under those. And that, that might be the only, you know, I don't know how many times it's going to occur in the summer, nobody does. But under those circumstances, we might ask that those vehicles be parked somewhere other than on the grass itself. I just have visions of what happened to the Heights Field.
Right.
One time when we had a road race there, and we had torrential rains, and it was a mud hole by the time that event was over. And I just think we need to create one exception, and that's when we have that kind of a rain event so that we don't create such a mess that literally it would take weeks to recover. And that would be, you know, really a handicap for the farmers' market actually being located there and conducting business the next week. So that would be something I would like to see us put in as a provision. And otherwise, I feel comfortable with the option A that they have proposed.
So the provision of being sensitive to the soggy-ness of, I mean, I guess I wouldn't want to say, anytime it rains, we can't do it. But to be aware of the, of that concern, I don't know how to put that in a way that
I'd like to leave that in the hands of the expert park manager.
Okay.
And that's, I think, part of what Rocky Gomes would opine upon. So I'll change my motion that the market be allowed vendor parking at Marina Park, subject to the recommendations of the parks manager. And who are we missing? Police? You said those are the two.
Correct.
So that would be my motion.
Do you want to include some of the recommendations that Heather has also of dealing with any time that there is any damage to it at the farmers' market, per request of Rocky, responds to it immediately to rectify it?
I would like to, yeah. If you don't mind, there's, you've got your list.
That could be a second motion. I think we could do yours, and then we could
I'd like to hear from Rocky on that.
Okay, so it's still within the same motion you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay.
But should we not itemize the other items?
And this is from Heather's list.
Yep. And I'd be willing to second, but I'd like to include these other items as well.
Happy to walk through them if it's helpful.
Sure.
The first item is a recommended one thousand dollar bond. That is the same bond that you've required for the two other large events on Marina Park. And the purpose of that was part of the working group's discussion, which came from Rocky Gomes relative to damage from vehicles, that the three hundred dollar bond simply doesn't cover what it would take if he was asked to go out there and repair the area. That's why that was asked of the renews of summers past and the boat
Striper Fest.
Striper Fest, yes, thank you, of those two events. So that's why that is thought here, just recommended. The other notes are that parking, and this again is all, I have not had a chance myself to talk to Rocky Gomes about any of these either. Parking on the lawn area prohibited during or immediately after a rain event. The parking areas to be marked, often monitored by the farmers' market, which I think with the current plan, that would be obvious. Parking placards issued for either Gus Canty or Marina, so that they issue, you know, permits to their vendors so that it's clear that they can be there. Repair maintenance requested by the superintendent, park superintendent, shall be undertaken immediately at the expense of the market. And any recommendations resulting from staff review. So that would indicate that to
With respect, just commenting on what Heather said, Mr. Chair. The, the parking prohibited during or immediately after a rain event, I'd rather wait and, and, and make that subject to Rocky's determination. If it's a sprinkle, I'm sure Rocky won't care. But if, I mean, it's just something that's sort of a moving target. Is that your point as well?
That's actually what I was going to say. Why don't we just simply say parking on lawn area during or immediately after a rain event may be prohibited by the park supervisor? And so we'll just make a contingent on the conditions of the turf.
That makes sense.
The only, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My only concern, and we should, I think waiting for the real language from, from Rocky would be a good thing, is that we don't want Rocky to be on farmers' market patrol. He has a very busy schedule in the summer, and for him to be, oh, it's raining, do I need to contact the farmers' market? There needs to be sort of a sense of accountability and responsibility.
I mean, I actually put that in the arms of the farmers' market to communicate with, it's their job to reach out to Rocky and say, what's your feeling on this?
I, I agree with Heather that we should let Rocky opine on how he wants to be notified or what he thinks is necessary in terms of monitoring.
And it sounds like it might make sense to us in theory approve this tonight and try not to approve it in actual detail until we've heard from Rocky and from the police department. That that may give the farmers' market a chance to move forward. But we're still putting a lot of things that are sort of, we're not sure because we haven't heard from them yet.
Except that they need to make representations to their vendors about whether or not they can park at Marina Park at all.
Right, and I'm saying, I, I would feel comfortable saying, I believe that we can do that in a way that Rocky will be comfortable with. It may mean that we're using all three options where they're rotating through and parking little different places. It may be a little more work on their part, but that, I mean, it is our decision to do so. And we ask Rocky, how can we make this happen?
So I, I think I, my motion still needs to be made.
Okay.
And that we would include the items that are listed in Heather's memo, except for the second one.
But, but implementation of these things, it seems to me, is up to our staff. And the communication channels need to be just, you know, set up. So I'm not sure we have to include that kind of detail.
I think you're right.
As long as we make the statement that it is contingent on approval of the park supervisor during a rainy period of time. To generalize.
We've got enough of that motion, yeah.
Heather, in your recommendation about the repairs, was it the idea that the, where you think that the farmers' market would perform the repairs? you think that the Farmer's Market would perform the repairs? Or were you prepared to fund the repairs upon immediate, you're saying if something happened?
I don't know that I've got that deep into thinking about it, honestly. But if there's clearly been damage to the property, the user should make the, make-
But that would come out of their bond.
Right.
I mean, I guess I'd rather have the bond not be $1,000, but the bond be what it was. But a provision saying, but they better have some money put aside in their kitty to pay for whatever needs to be done.
I think you go with the leave it like you found it approach. If there's a $1,000 bond at the end of the season, if they've left the area in the condition that they found it, the bond is returned. So it really would be up to them. If they wanna dip into the bond and allow town force to make efforts, then that would be the choice of the market.
I agree.
Do you move it?
My motion was that we move for approval of the use of Marina Park, subject to the direction of the staff in terms of getting an opinion from the parks department and police, and that we include the $1,000 bond for any damage.
Any discussion on the board?
There's no second yet.
Second? I'll second it if there isn't. Any other discussion on the board?
Yes. I would like to propose an amendment to that motion. Okay. That motion with the stipulation, did you include the $1,000 bond?
I did.
Okay. That parking on the lawn area during or immediately after a rain event may be prohibited by the park supervisor. That parking area to be marked off and monitored by the Farmer's Market. Parking placards issued for either Gus Canty or Marina, or Marina Park Lawn, depending on the particular date, and whether the parking is allowed, that's an aside. And then repair or maintenance requested by the park superintendent shall be undertaken immediately at the expense of the market. And then finally, any, well, any other recommendations resulting from the parks department should be part of the, should be reviewed and implemented.
And police.
And, and police.
Thank you. Are you okay with that amendment being added?
Yes.
Oh, you wanna just include it as part of your motion then?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll second, or you second it already.
I'd like to ask the Farmer's Market if they feel that this is a, something that they are going to be able to live with. Because if we approve it and you say it won't work, I'd rather have that known at this time than have you guys come back in three weeks.
Can someone come to the podium?
Susan Rydakal, Farmer's Market. The only concern I'm having about this, I think this is all sounds great, it sounds workable, is as far as Gus Canty goes. If it's a rainy day, and we already have all that congestion, the craziness, because you have the ferry letting out, you have the other 25 vendors from the art market, and on a rainy day, that's even be more congestion. So if there's some way to take Gus Canty out of that and figure out some kind of parking at the park, I think would be probably best.
And the only time it's mentioned is in the parking placards, whether they could be Marina Park or Gus Canty. I don't think it's actually necessary with the way that they've come up with the parking to include Gus Canty within that line of it.
Because Gus Canty is, that is a big issue for the vendors. And if it's raining and it's, you know, horrible out, you're gonna have the traffic coming out of, onto Main Street. You'll have 25 Falmouth Farmer's Market vendors, you'll have 25 art market vendors, plus you also have the ferry lets out at that time. So-
And you won't have nearly as much parking at the Marina on a rainy day.
The only reason I had that in there, Mr. Chairman, is that I wasn't sure what the parking plan was going to be. And so I wasn't sure that there was going to be a request of some here, some Canty. So it really is up to the board as to whether you'd like to strike that.
And honestly, my, my reason for including it in there was because wherever the parking should be, there should be signs directing people to it. And so if Gus Canty is not what you're gonna be using, you don't need a sign for it. But it's more just to provide appropriate direction for people, so they know where to go to park.
The placards are actually, the little plaques that the vendors would put in their cars, so they wouldn't be towed or-
Oh, I see.
That's what the placards were for.
And, I mean, I'm not sure whether it actually needs to be removed or not. I mean, it could be that you, five vendors are happy to do that and want it. And so I don't think, in our stipulation, we weren't saying, that's where you're going. We're just gonna say, if you're going to use parking spaces there, we want those vendors to have placards saying, we're with the Farmer's Market. And that's the way we're thinking about it.
Yeah, the placards are completely fine. We've already thought about how we're gonna make-
So I don't mind taking out the specification of the location.
He's resolved it.
Okay.
No, it was really if they wanted reserved space at Gus Canty, we needed to know that and make sure that was available and there are placards for it. It was an accommodation, not a-
And if you could just define immediate, you know, like the next day, or, you know, by the next week, how that would work out as far as taking care of which, we've always been great stewards of the parks, I don't think that would-
I think we're gonna have to wait to have Rocky's feedback on that one. I think the strongest thing, and I think this is something the Farmer's Market's been in the past, but that communication between the Farmer's Market and Rocky is gonna be very, very important with most of the, most of the communication being prompted by the Farmer's Market.
Now, if the market is up and going, it's 1:00 and it starts raining, we'll come-
I'm sure Rocky, Rocky is a very reasonable person who's gonna say-
That's what I think. All right.
Same thing if it's a sprinkle at 6:30 in the morning for half an hour, that's not what we're thinking about. It's really much more the concern if it's been raining for seven days in a row and the wheels are gonna sink in no matter what you do. That's where the concern really happens. Tim?
One clarification. I liked your option A best. I thought it was a very reasonable proposal to try to rotate the location of trucks and what have you. So I, I don't know that that was mentioned, but should we have an understanding that, you know, you're gonna honor that sort of thing?
The explanation of the three options were, when their discussion originally with Rocky, that Rocky was saying, he wasn't thrilled about them always being parked in the exact same space every week. And that's the reason why there's option A and B and C, that it might be something he's gonna ask and say, okay, this week, use option A.
Oh, I see.
Next week, use option B. Next week, use option C, just to give that grass a little bit of a rest. But again, I think that can be communication with Rocky saying, actually, it's fine. You go ahead and use option A for five weeks in a row, it turns out not to be a problem. But they have that fallback plan of saying, and that's the reason I think they've drawn up the, the different three options of, of choosing option A.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
None.
You had it. Next on our agenda is to discuss the selectman meeting calendar. And there are a few things I do want to point out. First off, we've moved a lot of things to March 2. We're also hoping to have our interviews for the Steamship Authority Governors Council on March 2. We right now have six candidates for that, so we'll be interviewing hopefully at least six people then. And so as opposed to the past few weeks, when we're gonna be here fairly quickly, I expect March 2 will be a fairly long night. If we look at the calendar in March, we certainly are gonna be on the 16th to wrote the article recommendations for both town meetings. If we consider March and April, April 13 is town meeting. We usually like to have a meeting the week before that on April 6. And so we, I would suggest that we, suggest that, expect that we are gonna meet on the 6th, which means we probably will not meet on the 30th unless something comes up that we have to throw that in there. And if you want to fill in April, likely we'll need to meet on April 27, two weeks after town meeting.
And what is your reason for only one meeting in March?
There's two, the 2nd and the 16th.
The 2nd and the 16th.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's March and April?
Yeah.
Just March, one ago.
Now, I would like to have Pat involved in the further discussion of it. I can't go too far in May because the election actually occurs in May. And while I will be running, I can't say that I'll be necessarily be at all of your May meetings, or at least a voting member.
The election is on the 19?
Yes.
There's your point?
Yep.
And so you're saying that the Monday before?
I'm not sure whether it makes most, it probably would make most sense to plan on meeting on May 11. Because we have not met until, since we met on April 27.
And the 18th, since the 25th is a holiday.
I, I would say the 11th and the 18th.
Yep, right, great. And we have those in there. And then, at that point, we can figure out the rest of the months. Individual Selectmen's Report? Sam?
I attended the meeting of the Finance Committee last week. They're going over the budget items. They haven't completed them, but, because they're still working with various town departments to complete that. Also attended a Conservation Commission meeting on Wednesday. But then on Saturday, I actually went and participated in the State's Chapter 70, that's the Local Aid to Education Review of the Foundation Formulus, and actually testified just to basically alert them to the disparity between increased health insurance costs on a yearly basis of 10% plus or minus, and our limits on the proposition two and a half for raising revenues on them. And just suggested to them that they think about Chapter 70 as a way of helping us maintain the quality of education with that kind of conflict that we're just built into the financing of school education. So I did that on my own-
Great.
-initiative. I didn't speak for the board. I spoke just as an individual, but of course they wanted to know who I was. So I did have to relay that. I could say that Patrick Murphy, the Director of Finance and Facilities for our school department, was there and also testified at that hearing.
Pass.
I haven't been to any meetings for a while, but I do think that we need to be reminded that there are quite a few conferences that are coming up for Selectmen. And from the Cape Cod Commission concerning our wastewater situation here in Falmouth, and they're in Hyannis, and I believe there's also-
25th, 26th, should be a lot of information.
And, and I believe there's a women's conference that is coming up in another couple of weeks, also in Hyannis. So just be aware of the calendar of things that are coming up for Selectmen.
Could I use this opportunity? This Friday is the Cape Cod Selectmen's Association. It's in Orleans. I'm planning to attend, and if anybody wants to carpool, just let me know. I'd be happy to, to travel together with them. The other thing that I might mention is that the Falmouth Education Foundation Gala, it's a fundraiser, is February 28. If any of you are interested in forming a table, I know my wife and I are going, but let me know and I can put in a request to just join together and try to reserve a table so that, you know, our, our contribution for, to that admirable effort is a little more visible to the rest of the members at the gala.
Great, I'll chat with you about that.
Okay, great. Anyway.
Anything else? We did have a meeting of the board at 5:30 this evening with Julian and Heather to look at the Parks Building and the Gus Canty Center as part of the consideration of the consolidated dispatch area. We were joined by Helen Kennedy, the Chair of the Recreation Committee at our department. And it was a very informative group. And it was very interesting to see both those buildings and their potential. I also, on a social event just before that, was able to, had a bite to eat in downtown and ended up sitting in a bar with three or four people who graduated from Falmouth High School with me, and all people who came back to town, living back in town, and talking about what a great place it is to be. And they work on the other side of the bridge, but every time they drive back into Falmouth, they just say how happy it is to be back in this town. So it was a little bit of old home evening, very enjoyable. Tom Manager's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one housekeeping item. At the, the board's last meeting on Monday, February 2, the board inquired about any possible action necessary from the Design Review Committee on the informational signs from the bike lab. And just to bring that to closure, we have inquired and confirmed that the size of the, the relative small size of the signs being proposed is well below the threshold required for any committee review and approval. So the board's action was definitive on that a week ago. And I also want to echo Chairman's comments on thanking the board for joining us at those sites visits to those two buildings. We appreciate that very much and finding that time in your busy schedules. And, Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank residents for their continued patience during this most challenging of short winter seasons so far. Hopefully it will be short. We got so far into January before the roof fell in, in terms of the inclement weather. However, a major challenge remains, trash pickup and recycling pickup. We appreciate and commend very much the extraordinary work of our colleagues in Public Works, and police and fire working around the clock during those major safety issues, including today. But trash and recycling pickup remains a concern. Some areas were not able to be picked up once again today due to the challenge of the weather. And we are on, once again, a one-day delay on weekly pickup this week. We also have some chase vehicles catching up on trash and recycling. So again, we thank residents for their patience as we catch up during a, an extraordinarily unusual time. And we will redouble our efforts to provide that service which, on which people have come so importantly to rely. So thank you for passing that along through the board.
One request I did hear is whether we can really make sure on the front page of the website, any changes to collection or any other things we may be dealing with, how people can deal with their trash would be very useful. If we could get that posted tomorrow morning, that would be great.
We will do that indeed.
And I just want to follow up on the Town Manager's Report. In terms of safety in the plowing and the ice and snow on the roads, it's been my experience, and I'm betting many Selectmen have had the same experience, that when an issue has come to my attention, I have immediately forwarded it to the Town Manager and it has been resolved, you know, in very quick action. So I just want to let people know that's, that your complaints have been handled, I think, very well when they come, when they come to, to the Town Manager and to the Department of the DPW. There are gonna be ongoing issues, as there always are challenges in the moraine and other areas. But I just want to really thank the Town Manager, the DPW, for just really elevating those concerns and dealing with them quickly.
It's been much more, they've been responding as, thank you for the information, we can get on it, as opposed to, why are you yelling at us? Their response has been, great, thanks, we'll get it right there. And what I, that their desire is to take care of it once they know about it, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one other comment on that, in that context? Because I think it is timely. As the board is aware, you have approved the creation of a community, a centralized communications department. And we are several months away, if all goes well, from having that implemented. But one of the things that this provides us the opportunity to do, in terms of raising the bar higher, is gives us another, a centralized vehicle for communicating with residents, and this is a perfect example. Will it solve all ills? No. But it will give us an additional instrument to more routinely communicate with the public so that we can use all the tools available, whether it be social media, whether it be website, whether it be telephone calls, emails. But gives us a central point of contact to involve all town departments in providing those so critical day-to-day basic services. So the board is proactive in terms of actions you've taken to create this new opportunity to provide more enhanced services. And that is one of the reasons that we continue to work so diligently in the direction of implementing that. And it is a, you know, there are some challenges in getting to that point, but it will be a greatly enhanced level of support and service that residents of the community well deserve.
Because my understanding is the, it would be a single-point communication, both in and out. So if anyone had a concern about anything, that's where they would contact. And then that-
That is ultimately the intent.
Would send it out to whoever needs to deal with.
Absolutely.
Or if information needed to go out to the community, it would go out from that one's point. As opposed to, right now, we have both an emergency preparedness Facebook page, we have the town website, we have the police department trying to do a webpage.
Yeah.
And it would just be one thing that would be taken care of all of that.
We would likely still have multiple points of contact, but this would centralize it, which is exactly what you're saying. So that would basically provide the opportunity for one-stop shopping.
More efficiency, less cost.
Well said. Well said.
Do we have any other issues? I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.